Welcome back to Margo and John and everybody, welcome everybody to our Board of Selectments meeting, a regular meeting for July 26, 2022. First item on the agenda is the call to order. Second on the agenda is approval of minutes from the regular meeting held on July 12, 2022.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on July 12, 2022.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next item is Audience of Citizens. Do we have any business to come through for the board from our Audience of Citizens?
Don't everybody jump up on us?
We're just here from the PTO and we were curious to know if the grant for the playgrounds, if there's any update on that grant in the bed of five more. And if it's not looking like we get it, what as we, the PTO can do to help move it forward because the playgrounds are not my school or definitely something.
Yes, yeah, you know, I just heard about that really, probably half a year, about the middle of the school year. But we did apply for a bond from the state of Connecticut. It's a little too early to say whether we've got it or not, but all the indications are that we will. So that's going to move forward. I expect we'll know that by the end of the week, maybe a couple of weeks. And that that was a bond for $325,000 for four playgrounds, really, two at the elementary school, one at Devitt and one at Plattwood. So the town will have to invest, I think, $50,000 and we'll get 325 to go towards those. So that, if everything goes the way they're indicated, I don't know how quickly we can get that stuff going, but I'd like to think we could have that project going by next summer, soon as school gets out, get going on it.
So just how, what can we as a PTO do to help support that?
I don't know that there's anything right now. It's in the State Bonding Commission. It's been put in front of them. We put all of our documents in, everything's submitted, and now it's just a matter of getting that yea or nay.
If it's, if it's a nay, then maybe some fundraisers or something like that would be appropriate, but until, until we hear, if it's a yea, then it's all going to be paid for. Everything will be paid for, so there won't be any need for the PTO for that project. You might have other projects that you want to do or whatever.
Right, and we're putting documentation, not, this doesn't have to do with the elementary school, so to stick with you, the PTO and it's just, let's just keep communicating, you know. I anticipate that, like I say, all indications are good. Things can fall off the rails, but it's out of our control right now, so we'll, when, as soon as we know, we'll let the school know and we'll start moving towards getting that built.
If and when the money does come available, will it be a community build or will it be built by the manufacturer? Because I know in the past with some resident have a community build where the PTO could help out there.
Yep. I would suggest that the school, it probably will not be, and at the parks, it might be. Let's just see what the costs are. If we can afford to, to build it out and have it built, then I think that's the way we would go. Because the highway, I know the highway crews are, our highway crew is pretty strapped, but I know we've had a lot of volunteers do things in the past.
That's why I'm asking.
Okay, great. Just to follow up with that though, a little bit, this bond is for the playgrounds themselves. We're applying for, we're in the process of applying for a steep grant to redo the two buildings, the gazebo's at the, both of the two parks. So those, hopefully, hopefully we'll get that and have that done within the next year as well, so dress up the parks a little bit.
Thank you.
Good. Anything else? Anybody else? Bobby?
I understand that the first selectman and the ZEO had a meeting with the prospective purchasers of Mont Saint Jard, and I'm just wondering kind of where that stands. So that's my first question. My second question was, when they came to survey the property, they also surveyed my property, which I thought was unusual since I wasn't notified, and I was just wondering if there's any kind of action that I could take to put in a complaint, or is that just normal that they could survey my property without my permission? So two of those two things.
I'll jump, I'll jump in first.
Do you like?
No, I mean, I hear what you're saying, Bob. A year ago, my neighbor's house was getting sold and they surveyed my property too because they couldn't find the pins for their property. So they surveyed my property, they were on my property surveying it. I didn't have a problem with it.
Their property is 500 feet away from my property though, so it would be obvious to anybody.
But I'm sure that, I don't know, I don't know the property layout there, but I don't know if it comes all the way down to the road.
It does not, that's my property.
In essence, it does, but we'll, I can.
I just, I just, I don't know that whole layout of that property. I'm just saying, my experience where I live, and I've lived there for a few years, but they surveyed my property to get the neighbors' boundaries.
I'm not an abiding property.
I will, I'll try to answer both of those questions, Bob. The first, we've been actually talking to prospective buyers of the property for the past three years. Different people have come in, said they want to do this, they want to do that, made an offer on the property and the sale has not gone through. This is the same thing. It was an informal meeting. It was something that I don't think that it's appropriate for, at this point, in a public meeting to disclose who or what it was. It was just someone, it was informal. They've made an offer to the church. Apparently it's moving, they're moving forward, at least further than most others, because they have authorized the surveys, as is indicated by the markings around, around the property. Regarding the survey, I'm going to speak to that, not as per selectman, but as a licensed land surveyor in the state.
It's kind of one of those, is why, because I knew you would know the answer.
The answer is that they, they do, as Duane said, understanding that your property proper goes back quite a ways from their property and it's actually separated by another property. They do, the property does have that easement that goes through. And I'm fairly confident that what they're doing is just mark is locating the access to the property. They do, they should have, and if my guys, if my guys had ever gone on another property and not notified the neighbor, or at least left a card or a note, then they would have been reprimanded. But they should have approached to, they do, as land surveyors, have the right to go on your property. They can't do any damage, but they do have the right to trespass in order to complete their survey.
Right. That part, that part I knew, but I just thought it was unusual that they actually surveyed the property and didn't tell me.
Yeah, well, they, you might be able to get a map out of it from them. Just talk, talk to them.
Get a free survey.
And, and then regarding, you know, I understand that there's private and public information and everything, which is why I didn't say the name of the business. But I understand that the ZEO is telling people the name of the business and what their plans are for the business.
I don't know about that.
And I thought that was unusual.
It is.
That if that was a private meeting, that the ZEO is telling people who they are.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know about that, but I certainly will talk to them tomorrow about that, because I don't think that they, I don't think that that's quite right yet.
I didn't think so either, and that's why I wanted to bring it up.
Yeah. Thanks. Anyone else? Next item on the agenda is appointments. And we've got a hot button these days with our Parks and Recreation Commission, and Kristin Anne Chassie has put her name, her hat in the ring. We had a nice conversation the other day, and we had the fortune of meeting her once before. But I think she's going to be a great member of the board that needs great members, needs members.
Needs members and needs good ones.
I certainly appreciate your volunteering to step up with that.
Excited.
Yeah, I, it's a good group and they do a lot of good things.
They do a lot of stuff, they really do.
For the, for the size that they are, they do a lot. So if I can take a nomination?
I'll make a motion for Christine Anne Chassie, I'm sorry. Term to expire in 2023 for Park and Rec.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Kristin. I think you're going to need to go over to the town clerk and get sworn in.
Okay.
Anytime, tomorrow, the overseas open late tomorrow? No, Thursday. Sorry. Okay, next item on the agenda is tax refunds from the tax collector. We have one refund this year that is for $11,267.14, I think was from an overpayment.
I'll make a motion for the tax refund from the tax collector in the amount of $11,267.14.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item is discussion of EV chargers. You guys, I'm sure, are aware that we have had an EV charger. We were one of the first towns in the state to have an EV charger on public property. That charger has been slowly deteriorating. It finally stopped funk, it's not functioning any longer. So about six months ago, we approached Titan Energy, who helped us with the solar panels, and they've come up and put together a proposal for three different types. We've chosen, we haven't chosen any yet, and the sustainability group concurrently is working with another group. So we're kind of waiting to see what their proposal is, but I don't want to wait too much longer. Once we get that, that done, we'll get that replaced, then it should take just a month or so after we, after we pull the trigger on it.
That one's been there a very long time.
That's been a very long time. What's going to, this, the one that we put in there now, we'll be able to charge two cars at the same time, and it will have a timer on it so that if someone puts their car in, they can't stay all day, like people were doing with the other one. Actually, if they stay, they get penalized, I think. I'm not all sure of the details, but it might actually even cost them a little bit of money if they, if they stayed longer than their charge. So that'll, I think that'll be good to keep things moving. We did, when that was working, we actually did get complaints from somebody who was just parking there all day long, so.
Any other locations in town?
Well, our sustainability representative, Cutilis.
We're proposing that the city may reevaluate the library for maybe more town hall, the ranking potentially, that's a tough sell because of the parking and the elementary school. So those are still pending walkthroughs, but they are all viable and viable.
I work with, with Titan, and they're looking, they looked at property at the Adams parking lot, which is very, with the quick chargers, those are awesome, because folks can just come in, plug in, go do their shopping, come back.
Is Adams generally receptive to that kind of cooperation?
Yes, they are, so.
Because I, that's why I was thinking the town hall one at Central, if somebody needed to go grocery shopping, and went, oh my God, like, left their cars, gets a charge, and the only one that's down there at the Aligro is not Central.
No, we're seeing it, and it's, I'm glad that we're seeing it, but there was a lot of, for a lot of time, people, you know, there's a maps, I guess, when you have an EV, when you have an electric car, they tell you, okay, we're going from New London to New Haven, I need to charge halfway, there's nowhere right now, come up the Deep River, so.
Can I make a second question?
Sure.
I was just wondering about Devitt Steel or Plattwood property, either one of those.
We're not putting the first car in, we can't do it all at the same time, right? So much money. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yep.
Thanks, great idea.
Yeah, no, we haven't pulled any trigger on anything yet, but we do have one existing proposal, we're waiting on another, but I hope, certainly before the end of the summer to have something in there. I'd like to say within a month, but I don't have a for sure.
Nice.
The next item is discussion of police vehicles. You guys sign the checks every couple of weeks, or every week, you see, our fleet, our police force has grown, and as a result, we were lucky enough actually to have enough cars to keep, to support the police force, to back to what it, what it was and what it should be. But the cars that we have are old, we were using them as spares, and we did get one new one a couple of years ago. But as you've noted, a couple of the older cars, they're in the shop as much as they're not in the shop these days. And we do need, I think we need to buy two. What I'm going to ask you guys to talk about a little bit, and then hopefully propose it to the Board of Finance tonight, and then move it to town meeting, is to purchase one. The proposals we've got, I think are going to run us no more than $65,000, it's probably going to be around 60, 55.
And that's fully outfitted.
Fully outfitted, yeah, fully outfitted. But I'd like to move, we have to move it, we're just putting good money after bad, and I think we should, should do that. And I'm going to propose that during the ARPA discussions coming, coming up in the next month or so, that we put the second, a second car in that, you know, so that we'll have four good functioning cars.
Do our, our police officers have any preferences to the type? Do they want a sedan, they want a Tahoe, do they want an Explorer? You know, and the appropriate, then there's a price difference when you go through those things.
I think that the, the two choices or the common vehicles right now are the chargers and the Explorers. I don't think there's a preference between our guys as to which they have. I think, I kind of like the Explorers, but I don't, I would leave it up to the police to tell me which are the better.
There, I saw a discussion at some point, I think it was in Seabrook, about Explorers versus Tahoe, and, and there was some concern that the Tahos were more money than the Explorer because they were bigger.
Yeah.
But I think I saw some numbers too, where they were very close, because Ford or Chevy doesn't have something Explorer sized with a police package. So when you're talking SUVs, you're talking ballpark, same figures, and we're talking sedans, they're probably talking pretty close to the same figure also. But, and then as far as fully outfitted, the lights, the sirens and all that, is Wayland participating these days?
Well, certainly they'll be given an opportunity, but there's another light outfit in, in town that we might go to, too. Wayland has been incredibly generous to this community for many, many years. And, you know, I'm kind of probably going to put a plug in over there too and see what they have. I know, not going, not probably, I'm going to go over there and see if they have anything that's coming up, because if they do, then, and they, and they want to continue with their generosity, then that would certainly be the way we would go.
And as you and I spoke, and just so you know, Jim, I would like to see the same color. I know, we were very fortunate how we got our cars in the past, and we were to, you know, the misfits, it would be nice if we had a uniform, blue, gray, black, whatever it may be, so they know that deeper police forces is this.
And I might take it one step further, in my opinion possibly, is to have them marked in some way, so that people know that they, you know, these cars, unlike state police cars where the state police officers take them home, you know, they're, they're take home cars, every, there's different guys, and if, if they're on the side of the road, you know, I like the fact that our residents can look out and see a police car and know it's a police car and driving through the neighborhood. And my, my personal preference would be to have some sort of marking on it. You know, maybe not as extravagant as Old Seabrook, because they have, they have, they have a rather extra, but, but Chester and Essex have markings, you know, that more or less for the uneducated people that see a, that dodge charger an Explorer, they don't know if it's a cop car or not. Sometimes the police want to be undercover and they don't want to be found, but, you know, I think we might look into maybe possibly the, the same colors and possibly marking the cars.
Okay, well.
And the other thing I would, I would like to look into, you're asking to buy one now and one maybe with the ARPA. I would like to look at buying two now and see if there's any better deal.
Yeah.
You aren't going to get much better deal on vehicles three, because there's no vehicles out there.
Right.
But it won't hurt to ask.
Yep.
And if we could save a few thousand, 5,000, 10,000, whatever it may be, I would like to at least try it and push the ARPA money along or whatever, however we find, you know, buy them.
No, I think that's a good point, and certainly if you, if you can get a bargain with two as opposed to one.
Yep.
And that's not, we're going to do that, who knows what we'll get. I'm going to ask tonight though, that we move to the, to our recommendations to the Board of Finance, that we move forward on one, with a not to exceed $65,000. If we find that there is a bargain, then we come back and ask for more. So if you're okay with that, let's, let's take a motion, just so we can, the Board of Selectment can recommend it.
I make a motion that the, that we forward to the Board of Finance, purchase one car, fully outfitted, not to exceed $65,000.
I'll second that with the option of looking at two cars.
All right, good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion of possible action of salary study. I forward you guys.
I got them all here, I didn't, I didn't.
Bud and I have interviewed both, or all three applicants for the project, and they were pretty divergent, divergent organizations. And also, both in, both in, in their operations, but also in the cost. You weren't at the last Board of Finance meeting, we had.
I was at the Board of Finance. I was at the last Selectments.
You were, okay, sorry, the Board of Finance. We, so you remember that we were authorized to spend up to $9,000. One of the proposals was for $10,000 plus travel time and all that kind of thing, and they were going to do everything over Zoom, all the interviews over Zoom. And she's not from, in state, I think she was from down in Washington. But the next proposal, the next lowest proposal was from an organization in North Carolina, but they have a person in, in Connecticut. They were good, I actually liked, I liked them very much, and Bud liked them very much, but they, they were going to charge travel time to come down for the interviews for one day, and then all the rest of the interviews were going to be over Zoom. And I just didn't like that, I don't think they're going to get the right information that they need, they're not going to get the right face-to-face conversation that they're going to have with people as they're trying to warrant things, to gather information. And the last, which I, as you guys are aware, I very rarely am happy to go with, or very rarely do I just go with low, low bid, because it is low bid, and that's the case with this. I actually, I didn't throw it out because it was low bid, because she was a very good interviewer. But she is from Middletown, she's going to come here for everything. And in the end, she also is a human resources consultant, and I'd like to move, maybe in the next budget, move so we could budget a little money for human resources. This is a growing staff and HR, an HR person, to just count on the first selectman to be able to be an HR person is not always the right, right thing to be. So maybe we could just hire her, find, find some room in the budget for an HR consultant when, when needed. So it opened up that relationship with her, with them, so. Bud and I have chosen Deb Millardo, she's from Middletown. It's a good proposal, I think we're going to get good information, and she will have it done, I think she suggested it be within 45 days after starting, so. We'd like to get started, I'd like to suggest to the Board of, Board of Finance that we're going to get started.
I like the one-on-one.
Yeah.
You know, versus Zoom, I mean, Zoom is, you, you hear all the, from schools to everything, Zoom isn't, isn't, is better than nothing, but not much.
What bothered me almost more than the Zoom was, you know, here's a proposal, and here's travel time to come do the work.
It should be included.
Not to criticize, but just fill it in, fit it into the proposal. So that's where we're going to go, that's where I'm recommending. And I'd like to get her started so we can have this as quickly as we can, because we had talked about having it done by September, so.
I, I'll make a motion, because I didn't interview the lady, you and Bud did, and we'll go on your recommendation, the numbers, I'd rather have someone local.
Yeah, yeah, I like that, too.
I think they know the community a little bit better than someone that's coming out of DC or North Carolina, or I don't care, the other lady was somewhere around Connecticut, but at least Middletown, they know the surrounding community.
Yeah, I didn't say, all of these groups have done this service for communities around Connecticut, around us, not right next door, but around us. So they've all worked in town, in the state. Deb Millardo has worked in very close towns, and like you said, she's, she's local and I like local. She, she actually worked in the Madison Town Hall for many years and was their HR person, so, and did their salary study while she was there.
Yeah.
Great, so we have a motion, did you second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Moving through this, and we're going to go this quick. Item number nine is approval of the 2021 Resolution and Memorandum of Agreement between the Town of Deep River and the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection. This is something that we have done in the past, every year we have to do it. Last year, we actually had to catch up on a couple of years, and this year we're catching up again because it was emailed to our former emergency operations manager, and we just, we just got it. So it's a resolution that we enter into and deliver to the State of Connecticut DEP, or Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, any and all documents which assume necessary or appropriate, and that the first selectman is authorized to direct and execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town. It's really something that's every year, just, it's a formality. Just a formality, so during emergencies, we can apply for FEMA assistance and also emergency assistance from the group, so.
So this, this is, right, the approval of the 2021?
Yeah.
Going back, okay.
Yeah.
And how long?
We'll have to do another one for 2022.
Yeah, 2022 will be due at some point in September, but, I mean, December, but they, they have my email address.
Okay.
This, as far as I know on these things, they are at the end of the year, so that we can send them.
Oh, okay, I was going to say, is there any advantage of this due on 21 and 22 at the same time?
I don't think we can.
Because, oh, because it's not due until December. I didn't know if it was due in January and, and where, or later.
I want a two for one, exactly.
This was due on December of last year, but we didn't get it, so we couldn't do it. So if we have a, a motion to adopt the resolution as the authorizing resolution of the Board of Selectment.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution as read by Angus McDonald for the approval of the 2021.
Put the memorandum in there as well.
The memorandum.
Oh, the memorandum of agreement, that's not in, oh yes, it is, the resolution and memorandum of agreement.
Okay, resolution and memorandum, thank you.
Good job.
I'll second it.
Good job. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, now, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session. I'm sorry, everybody, and I'm sorry for the camera, but we do have to discuss the union contract, and that needs to be in executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session at 6:58.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, we're back out of executive session, we voted to come out of executive session at 7:07. No actions were, were taken, no votes were taken. And now, after that, that conversation, I will entertain a motion to authorize me to sign the, the union contract for, for this year, and I think it's for a four-year contract.
I'll make a motion to have Angus McDonald sign the four-year contract for the municipality union.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All that done?
Any other town news?
No, I think that's, I think we will have some big town news in a couple of weeks, but let's wait until we actually have it, so. We'll have a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn at 7:08.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everyone, this is the July 26, 2022 Board of Finance meeting. First thing is, first thing is we should welcome back our, I wish this to be a complimentary term, a, our visual crew, our support crew.
Videographers.
Videographers, there you are, there is a, there is a much more impressive term, so thank you for joining us, and although Angus assures me that he has been putting out the, the YouTube that online, but I do find people from time to time will stop me and say they see, seen us, they saw us on TV and we. And we must thank you for that kind of thing. So, so thank you there. So first item on the agenda would be audience of citizens.
We have to approve the minutes.
Oh, we have to, oh, I do. And that is actually on my, is actually on my thing. And you and I practiced today, we are asking for a approval of the June twenty-eighth minutes. Board minutes, does, would anyone propose to accept those?
Summit.
Second.
And second. Oh, in favor, please say. Discussion. Sometimes you want me to discuss it and sometimes you, I get confused.
We always want you to discuss it.
Would anyone like to discuss the minutes?
No.
Hearing none, can I have, all those in favor approving the June meeting minutes? You say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Then I can now go to my audience of citizens unless Angus has found a citizen out there and we will move on. It is, you know, we say audience of citizens all the time, and from time to time, we do have audit. It's a catchy term, isn't it? Audience is a gathering. Citizens are people who have obligations to participate in their government. And we, and Angus, I need your help. Do all boards require or give participation of citizens, audience of citizens, or is it at the discretion of the board?
Well, every board is different. Planning and zoning, they are required at certain times to have public hearings.
Yes.
Once that public hearing is done, they're, the public is not allowed to speak. Statutorily, forget about whether they want to, now they're not allowed to speak. Other groups, even the board of selectmen, we, we are gentle and allow for our audience of citizens. But oftentimes, whatever topic is being discussed stirs the interest of one of the audience and they will have something to say. And we generally allow, not always, it depends on the subject and things like that, but generally, but no, not, not everyone is required.
And I already paused for the moment. I think it is a generous of us to have an audience of citizens, ask citizens to participate. We as a group historically have only allowed citizens, I'm too strong, have only allowed citizens to participate when we asked at this point in the meeting. How did you phrase it? Soft. I have from time to time going soft and I shall not. And various board members have pointed out to me from time to time that citizens have the right to speak early in the meeting, but not throughout the meeting.
That is, that is the truth. I, I tend to, depending on the tone and depending on the topic, feel like sometimes it's okay to just go ahead. And that's probably.
And it has worked out other than it can, that softness can backfire.
It can, it should stay consistent.
But I wish to point out to the board, we should take pride in ourselves asking citizens to attend our meeting and giving them an opportunity to talk. And I guess I just wanted to finish it in a positive turn. With that, Tommy, who is a citizen, but tell me the treasurer's report.
Okay, hopefully everyone either received it. I know it was sent out by Kathy and you have the hard copy there. Let's see, let's start with, okay, so these balances were as of yesterday. So I did make a wire transfer today. We took a hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund and wired that over to the municipal sweep money market account. And so that was done this afternoon. I will say that good news is that the interest rates have gone up. Liberty Bank increased their interest rates almost, so we're almost double what we were getting before. So on the capital improvements borrow account, it went from point three oh to point six oh. And those other two accounts went from point three five to point six five. So that's, that's, that's good news. I did notice on the capital improvements borrow, that was originally a million four hundred and twenty-five thousand. That was our bond issue and that money was deposited into that special account at Liberty Bank where we can actually get interest. And I did see there was about a twenty-eight thousand dollar dispersed money.
Yeah.
And let's see, I did make three wire transfers during the month. They all went from our citizens' bank general fund account into the municipal sweep money market account. One was on July fourteenth for a million dollars, one on July twentieth for a million dollars, and then today the eight hundred thousand. So the last month we transferred to a million eight hundred thousand tax, actually tax revenue monies into that, that account. The ARP fund, that American Rescue Plan Act, where we can actually get a little bit of interest on that account. In the last year, so it was from July of twenty-sixth of last year to July twenty-fifth of this year, we earned four hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents. We did get this month, we did get fifty-six dollars and fourteen, fourteen cents in interest. Our education equalization grant monies, the, the first payment that we will receive will be in October of two thousand twenty-two. So in this new fiscal year, and that will be a quarter of the amount that we receive. On the capital improvement borrow account, that our bond issue with, it's actually with Dine Bank, was a million four twenty-five. The first annual principal payment and interest payment will be due on August fifteenth. So we'll be paying ninety-five thousand dollars in principal. And the rest will be eight thousand, one oh four sixty-nine will be in interest for a total of one oh three, one oh four sixty-nine. So that interest is actually from when that account opened up on June eighth to August fifteenth, when, when it's due. So interest accrues from, for that period of time. On that account, there's one principal payment a year, but there's actually two interest payments a year. So the other, just the, the interest payment will be due on February fifteenth. And that interest payment will be twenty-one thousand, six twelve fifty. That loan is for fifteen years, three and a quarter percent fixed rate. That's pretty much it. I did, if you look at the bottom line, we've got the total account balances of nine million four twelve, four forty-six fifty. And you look at where we were last year at seven million eight twenty-three, four sixty-five, nineteen. Looks pretty impressive. However, if you, if we subtract out the capital improvements borrow account and we, and we take away the American Rescue Plan Act, brings us down to less than, we have actually less this year than last year. We have a seven million, three fifty-seven, five oh six. Having said that, we will be getting some additional money certainly in the next couple of days from our tax revenues. Month end, I'm sure we'll be getting quite a bit of money. Kate will be busy the next couple of days.
The one point nine, one point three nine, that is our borrow, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. And what did Angus, the attorney either told you to or advised you to put that into a separate account?
To get, you can actually get interest on that, that money.
And my curiosity is, we will see it, the budget is going into the general fund. I assume they are putting it into a separate account because, and we will spend it too. We were concerned about earning arbitrage on it.
Yeah.
There was a story that was told to me when I was a young accountant, as opposed to an aged accountant. There was a, I think a town in California who went out, issued, I think it was a hundred million dollar bond of which they were doing a ten million dollar project. They did the ten million dollar project and invested the remainder. It earned enough in taxable things to pay for the entire bond issue. And the government said, this is not exactly what we had planned. So they have made, now you have to, now you have to report periodically. And while it's silly to think that we will earn more on this, but interest rates are going up. So, but I assume that is why. Complementing Tommy, here is, I do have contacts with the tax collector. Here is an update, I think that one, here's a brief update for taxes as of today. I'm not sure there's much more than what Tommy has pointed out. She has given us a sort of detail of what has been collected. If you remember at the annual meeting, citizens give her the right to collect property taxes on your real estate two times a year. So of the real estate, which is the workhorse of our taxes, she's expecting about, we are expecting about fourteen million dollars, of which to date about twenty-six percent has been paid as of today. Motor vehicles, we've collected a little over fifty-five percent. It is paid all at once. It is difficult to make too much out of it at this point. Last year on July twenty-seventh, we have collected four point six, uh, four point five. This year we have collected four point six five, a little bit more, but again, I think we should all be hesitant. Let's say taxes are coming in strong and have nothing to particularly, at least at the moment, no reason to be concerned. So as Tommy pointed out, the largest taxpayer will pay on the last possible day. Those who have mortgages and citizens will pay in escrow. We should get about a one point million, one point five, one point six million this week and it's clicking along. And another one in that place, they get about a little over two hundred. So we should get a little, at least over two million dollars by the end of the week. They have till, I believe it is August first to pay without a penalty. It was, I keep using word interesting, I find these things interesting. People, we still got a long way to go getting thirteen million, what, fourteen, fifteen million dollars. It is amazing how many people will pay late and incur the interest costs, but they do pay in the town of Deep River. That is the good news.
You're only going to get half of that this time around, maybe a little bit more than half. You get the motor vehicle tax, you get the half the property tax, but the other half is exchanged.
That's correct.
You won't get fourteen, fifteen million.
No, no, we will not.
You get eight, nine maybe.
You would expect by the end of August to have about eight or nine coming in, but we shall say, good.
Could I add one point to Tom's report? This is a very minor detail, Tom. Where it says memorial fund account, community fund, technically the memorial fund no longer exists. It was spent out a few years ago and, and the title could change if you wanted it to, if it's legal to do so, et cetera. Really, the only fund there is the community fund at this point.
Oh, okay, so it's the memorial fund, you want the community fund account?
Yeah, that would be more accurate. There is no more memorial fund.
We ran two initially, didn't we, two funds?
We did. We did. And the memorial fund was spent out on purpose. Because there were some rules and regulations to that. There are less rules and regulations to the community fund. Because the memorial fund came from the visiting nurses some time ago.
Remember the some time ago, good, community fund, get the pass parking, get the pass parking with, in the community fund on.
No, we need to have three properties.
Real roads. Angus, that brings us to selectmen's reports. Do you have anything that you would like to take us through?
Thanks. Come to mind, and the crowd will more, but I can think of two right now. First is police vehicles. We spoke with the board of selectmen and voted to recommend that we, we purchase at least one police car and shop for two and see if we get a, if we get a better deal if we buy two. And now, and now the backstory. You, you are all fully aware, I'm sure, that, that we have increased our police force as a result. We need the cars. We have the cars that we need, but they were older cars. We did get a new car donated to us in Wayland Engineering as we spoke at the selectmen's meeting. They've been incredibly generous to the community for many, many years. But as of right now, I don't believe that they have any cars available, that they don't. I'm going to follow up with them again, but I'm not, I don't think that they have any available. We have got two cars that are, I would suggest at this point, we're putting good money after bad. They're costing us more than they, than they should. And if you look at the vehicle maintenance line, you'll see that was dramatically overspent last year. We've already spent, we've probably already spent it this year. I think it's, we need to do that. The, the initial shopping that we've done, it looks as if we can get a car for somewhere between sixty and sixty-five thousand. I would like, and that's fully outfitted, including, you know, the cameras and the recording devices that we just purchased will transfer right over to the car, anything that can be transferred as well. The computer and things like that. But we need them. And I'd like very much for us to move to town meeting to purchase at least one with a price not to exceed sixty-five thousand. And if, if, if we find that we get a bargain for two, I will come back to you guys for that second one.
Where is that coming from?
I would recommend that it comes out of our cap. Well, I'm not sure what we have left in capital. I haven't looked into.
Not enough for a car.
Yeah, not enough for a car. So we transfer it out of, out of the general fund.
Excellent question. I give as background the note that I sent to you. I believe we will end June with a surplus of at least four hundred and thirty-some thousand dollars. I think that is a little on the conservative side, but I give you that comfort, I give you that comfort. The general fund is, the surplus is growing a tad.
Yep. And I think what I, what we originally discussed was the first car, buy the first car immediately or as quickly as we can. The second car would go back to the town to utilize ARP funds, or at least that, that was my suggestion. The board of selectmen decided or talked about the idea that, that sometimes if you buy two, you get a better value, better cost, better price. If we can do that and buy them immediately together, that's what we would suggest.
So what would you be taking to the town, a public?
Well, right now.
Two cars?
Right now, right now I'm asking, we voted to ask you for up to sixty-five thousand for a car.
Okay.
If we find we get a better, I, you know, who knows what cars are available out there right now. So we will, we'll start that process.
How many cars do we have?
We have four. Right now we have five, but three, one, one of them is not outfitted. It's just been a spare. The other two are, the other, the four that are being used all the time, two of them are are just, have got too many miles, too many hours.
Are they shared amongst the officers?
No.
They each other apart?
They're all, the cars are getting, one of the cars is getting five shifts a week. The others are getting four.
So you're asking the board of finance to give you the authority to take to a town meeting request to buy one car not to exceed?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, okay. And the second car comes in how into that?
The second car and Twing, pipe up, but the, the second car will come in if we go to Sabre Ford and they give us the best price, we ask them, hey, what if we buy two? If they say, well, if you buy two, rather than sixty thousand, it will cost you a hundred and ten thousand. So we save ten thousand and we'll come back and say, hey, we can get a bargain if we do this.
I follow the concept of savings, but would you cancel the authority of the board of finance? Or is that nullified, but the board of finance already gives you?
No, I would come back for an additional.
Okay, so I'm going to add this thing to my cancel. You would cancel it and ask for another one? It will allow you to spend up to a hundred and ten?
Well, yes and no. If you, if you happen to go to Sabre Ford or wherever we're going to purchase it.
Yeah, wherever we are, just pull that out of there.
And they say one car is sixty-five thousand, we can get two cars for a hundred and twenty-six thousand. Then I think you should come back and say, we're looking for two cars versus the one car. So I would probably do some research.
Well, I will. We're certainly going to do research before we go to town meeting.
Right, but should we even be asking for tonight or should we?
No, the only reason that I'm asking for tonight is number one, I didn't think about the bargain until after we had that. And there is no, there's no board meeting in August. That's the only reason for that. That's the only reason for that.
So that's our, that's our concept that we're, that at least I was looking for, to see if we can get two for, and get a, a savings.
If, if the, if the second one was, is gonna be probably ARP, ARPA money?
That's what I was, we're gonna, that's what I was suggesting.
What about authorizing the purchase of two, one sixty-five, half of it out of the town budget, if you will, and the other half out of the ARPA, ARPA money? And that way you, you can't, you, you cover purchasing both at the same time and just where the money comes from.
Yeah.
We still have to get approved.
But we have to.
You have to get approved.
Is that what you want to do?
It's certainly cleaner, this is frankly, we got on a separate road from what I had planned. And I, I didn't.
I took him down the dirt road.
I didn't, uh, I didn't, I didn't make an adjustment yet in the request. The request initially was for one car. I'm reluctant, I'm reluctant, we need two cars, but I'm reluctant to ask for a hundred and ten thousand dollars, um, for two cars, if there are alternatives. Um, and if, or if we, and, and there is an alternative with the ARPA money. The thinking, my thinking with the ARP is that that is being put together, that large ask to the town is being put together now. I'd rather than go in with just a car and then a month later go back with fifteen other requests, I'd like to put all that together. So we will do some research. I would like to have authorization to go to town meeting. So if we can buy a car, if we find there is no bargain, then we can go to town, schedule a town meeting and go and, and purchase a car in a timely manner. In a couple of months, we will come back to the, to you and then to the town with a larger package that will probably include a second car. And that will be from the ARP funds. And certainly when we're shopping, we'll say, hey, can we buy two? Get the bargain for two, we'll fund one now, we'll fund another one later.
Give you the flexibility, right? Give you flexibility to go to, we answer, do extra one and count for us one. Board of finance, thoughts?
So, um, a couple of months ago, we talked about the ARPA funds and there were specifically, you had a complete, just three buckets. Um, can you refresh my memory what those were, one was social?
Public safety, um, public sa, capital improvements, basically, public safety, capital improvements. Um, social services and arts and wellbeing.
So this falls into the bucket of public safety?
Capital, public safety.
Okay, and does that fit within the budget that you planned? Because I know we buy a fire truck with some of that money as well. So I'm assuming about two, how much, is it six hundred thousand dollars?
There, there are six hundred and fifty thousand now approximately and another six hundred and fifty thousand coming. So we will, we've got a million and three.
So about four hundred thousand to be spent on?
Right now, we've spent three hundred, that, we've authorized three hundred thousand to go towards, um, the radios for all of the, all of the public service, um, you know, fire, ambulance, public works, police already have it, and emergency operations. So that's three hundred thousand is going from that. Um, this would add to that.
So that's pretty much, we need to have all the public safety dollars?
It could, it could, we'll, we'll see.
Wasn't public safety fifty percent?
I thought, I think public safety was lumped in with capital improvements and that was, that was about fifty percent in twenty twenty-five.
So six hundred thousand.
And that's a valid interpretation of those funds that, that police cars not considered part of our budget?
It is, but the, the final ruling from the federal government was that capital improvements, normal parts of your budget can be included in this if you receive less than ten million dollars. And under the line, and we just, we just missed it. Now, some towns didn't wait for the final ruling, just went out and bought fire trucks and ambulances and spent a lot of money on their capital. Worked out for themselves that that was okay. We have gone slow and steady, waited for the, waited for the final ruling and all that kind of stuff. And, um, one other thing that we, that I, I'm studying, I haven't brought it in front of the board yet, but I'm researching with, um, some communities, and I'm speaking with a fellow who has facilitated at least one other town, has put some of this ARPA money into actual recovery for local businesses can, can apply for and be granted, uh, you know, probably nowhere near what they lost when you divide it up into all of them. But we can find a budget number that we can take from the total and put a small grant together for the, for some of the local businesses if they can do an application. This fellow has done this for at least one other town, I think two, and he, um, it takes, what I like about it is, he, he, he runs the program, so it takes it out of the town hall, it takes it out of our, he develops the questionnaire, which he's already done. He develops all of the application forms for the businesses to submit. He reviews them and ensures that they check all of the boxes. And if they do, then, then we can go and, and get some of the businesses who have lost some money. And I, I would suggest our restaurants suffered more than anybody. I'd like to give them an opportunity to, uh, to get some recovery. That, that really was the, the mission of this money.
What's it for him?
Oh, he gets paid, yeah, which comes out of the ARPA funds.
A question from the selectmen is seeking a recommendation from us to send to a town meeting, our approval, sending to town meeting, uh, up to sixty-five thousand dollars to buy a?
Police vehicle.
Police vehicle.
Fully outfitted.
Fully outfitted. Uh, does anyone on the board of finance wish to make that proposal, that recommendation?
So if we recommend it now, he can't do anything with it until he finds out the price of the car and if he can obtain a car and?
No.
No, I could, if you guys will recommend it, then I will begin.
Did you just say if they have cars?
Well, yeah, of course, I've gotta do some shopping, but I, I, there's no point in me even going shopping if I don't have any money to spend. So if you guys will send it to town meeting, I will do some additional research and find a car. And once we find that car, find a real price, we will go to the town meeting and say, this is the cars, this is what we'd like to spend.
What happens if we tell, I mean, it sounds to me also in the sense that it takes the police off the road if the car breaks down, right?
Well, we've been borrowing, Chester has no police right now, so we've been borrowing their car.
Ah, that's funny.
I have, that's funny you mention that, cause I have seen our guy in a Chester.
We will make do, but it's not, it's not right for us to do.
And what do we do with the car that we're replacing?
Sell, we will sell it.
And then just, again, as a member, just explain to me, um, cause the world I lived in before is, you had to plan all your capital and it bounced. We just approved a budget, just started. Do we not think about this when we were in our budget?
I did not think that this, that this was going to get to this level this quickly. It was in, it was going to be in the budget to, for next year.
So do, should we be thinking ahead, like how many years to get out of a car? So we need to be thinking in twenty twenty-three, we need to buy this many cars and like something like that to budget?
Yes, no, our capital improvement plan, we will, police cars will be in there. Remember, our, our police force grew from two to four. We were, we were fortunate enough to, we get, we donated a car and we had enough. So we, um, we were, we didn't need to go out and buy one. You know, I, I hate to say, I was planning, because I wasn't planning, but I was hopeful that Wayland would, would have another car available. They, they did not the last time we checked, so we will go back to them and ask.
At least two of our cars have stories, don't they? They've been injured in battle and things stopped working by surprise.
Yep.
And you said two are not outfitted, aren't they, so does that mean they can't be used?
The, the, the spare car, we have a spare car that is, it's about two thousand and, two thousand and third, two thousand and nine, two thousand and eleven.
It's a retired car.
It's a retired car. The lights have been taken off it and used on another car. But it, it was being used for traffic and going to meetings and things like that.
Yeah, we look at the vehicle maintenance, so we, we budget sixty-five dol, sixty-five hundred and we, twelve thousand, almost two hundred. So we, we doubled the maintenance on the vehicle.
And police cars are just town props?
Police cars, let's just police cars.
Wow.
Well, there's twenty percent of a, a brand new vehicle. That's all. Yeah. Granted, that's not all on one vehicle, but that's still a lot of, a lot of money that we're throwing away.
But you're, you are correct. This is, we, we'll be in capital improvement. And with these two cars, we, we won't, we should not need a car for another four or five years.
But I do think we should put somewhere like a long range plan and do that, we're gonna do it five years.
If, um, if it's okay with Bud, we can talk about some of the things that I've been taught, we have been talking about with our, um, auditors and our accounts, talking about actually establishing a police line. So that will be part of that planning.
Well, play with your words, a police fund, get it out of the line.
Yeah, to get it out of, to get it out of here.
And we're always doing, you need four cars?
As long as we have, as long as we have four, I would say.
Would it increase, would we be getting more police?
I don't think so. I, I, I think we are right where we need to be. We've got coverage for, you know, two shifts a day.
And I may, may we still make a motion that we authorize Angus to, um, go to a town meeting to, um, recommend purchasing a police car up to sixty-five thousand? Second?
Okay, all right. First and second, any discussion? Anyone reserve, concern, any comments?
If you're gonna take, uh, this is just my take, uh, we're gonna take sixty-five thousand from our budget, our capital fund.
Surplus.
Okay, surplus. And you're gonna take sixty-five thousand from ARPA. I would just assume, do it the other way around, take the sixty-five thousand from ARPA, come back, do this later. That's just my opinion.
But does he still need to go to a town meeting or Google on that?
On ARPA, he does. Either way.
Either way, we have to go to town meeting.
I was assuming you're gonna check it out and go to the town meeting once for either one car or two, not go back twice.
Well, um, not quite. What I wanted, we're going to probably do that. I, I don't think we're gonna find a bargain. It was a good idea and it, and it's worth exploring. I don't think we're going to find it. I think that we're going to find, we have, we buy a car now. And then when our, when the ARPA funds are ready to get to the town, which is probably going to be September, um, we buy a car then.
So by doing what Ross has suggested, does that slow the process down for you?
Yeah, we wait for ARPA.
But you have ARPA funds.
We have ARPA funds, we don't have approval.
And how does that?
So what I would be doing with that is separating a car, we have a town meeting.
To purchase a car?
To purchase a car with ARPA.
At sixty-five thousand dollars. It doesn't say, the motion didn't say where the money was coming from.
I think it does.
It does.
No, I didn't.
Your motion didn't, but it will by the, by the end.
You're gonna have to go.
My, my interest is, is not, is in not separating ARPA individual things from ARPA, because we've already done that with the three hundred thousand, we didn't do it. We voted to, but have not brought it to the town yet for the Parker Recreation Music Festival thing. Because I don't wanna come in one thing at a time and then all of a sudden we find we're short. I wanna really have this planned out and, and go for what we're gonna go for. So waiting for September, um, for the ARPA. Now, we can, if you, if you all want to, we can just bring sixty-five thousand to the town for ARPA funds. But I think it's a, it opens up a bigger conversation and I prefer to keep that altogether.
I see what's happening in other towns around the ARPA funds, I don't think that's a good idea.
No.
No, I don't either, that's why I didn't suggest.
Because you have all the people looking for social services and other, you know, mental health, you know, whatever it is. Saying, buy police cars with this, what about us? So I would like to see a whole thing.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're working, that's what we're working towards, so.
Other questions, other comments? All right, a call vote?
Do we have to amend it or we do that afterwards?
I don't think it has to be amended. I think it is a recommendation board of finance to take a request to the town for allowing us to spend out of town surplus up to sixty-five thousand dollars.
So that's amending Carmelo's?
Yeah, I didn't say where it was coming from.
Well, if the board of finance is approving and you have no condition otherwise, it's coming out of surplus.
Which isn't understood then.
We don't do ARPA.
We don't, we bump into ARPA, but this ain't doing ARPA, as they say on the street.
So the motion should stay where it's?
I think their motion is well phrased, yes. All right, a call vote. All those in favor of sending a, a request, uh, to, for sixty-five thousand to buy a police car to a town meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All right, three to one, all right, looks like it passes.
Thank you. I will report to you what we find. Next thing to, uh, that came from the board of selectmen, actually comes from your chair and ours. Bud and I have put out a request for proposals, we've called some people, and I had three replies to our consultants for, um, our salary study that we spoke about in the past budget season. We interviewed, uh, three firms. There was a wide range of, uh, of costs. And while I'm not a low bid guy, we did land at the low bid, which I think is actually good. The person, we had one person who was beyond, the cost was beyond what we had, we had approved, which was, if she was heading, heading shoulders higher, we would have come back asking, or better, we would have come back asking for that. But there were some things in her proposal and she's, uh, that we, we just decided not to use her. Um, the second firm, which was very close, uh, is out, based out of, I think Wilmington, North Carolina, but has a?
Louisville, Louisville.
Louisville.
Louisville, Kentucky.
But has a representative in, one of the partnerships in, in, in the state. We spoke with them at length, what I, there was two, two factors with this particular proposal that I didn't like. One, and they were tied together really, uh, they were going to come up to do interviews with the people on one day. They were gonna charge us travel time to get up here for them. And anything that they couldn't get done in that first day, they were going to be assumed. And it just didn't sit well with me, number one, I, I didn't like being charged travel, here's the proposal, this is what it's gonna cost to do it. And I, and I don't like the Zoom factor. I think when you're interviewing folks about their job and their work, you're going to get more candid and more real responses in person. I thought that was important. Um, the person that we did choose is based out of Middletown. She's a human resources person, she will conduct everything, will be in person. And, pardon?
What's the name of the company?
Uh, Deb Millardo, uh, consultant in human resources is the, is the firm.
Miss Millardo of our company, that's well within our?
Yes, well, well, yes. And, uh, she's local, she's Middletown, I like her. The, the other thing that I spoke with the board of selectmen about is I like the fact that she is in the human resources field. And it will open up a door that if we in fact can determine that we can use her services, we may be able to put into future budgets some funds to utilize some human resources consulting. I think as our town grows, um, depending upon a first selectman who may or may not have human resources experience, very few do, very few do, it will be beneficial for us to be able to call on, on those, on her for services. And this kind of develops a relationship, so.
Has she done other towns?
She has done, all three firms have done Connecticut communities. All three firms have done communities relatively near us. She, I can't remember the town, these specific towns that she did, but, um.
Deb was in, she was the HR person in-
In Madison.
Madison, and for twenty years in Middletown.
Yeah.
So she certainly knows the market.
She knows her business.
Yeah. And I, I'm gonna repeat what Angus said. I think our folks need someone sitting beside them, being present, and that was one of the big ones.
It was, it was a big, it was a big factor. I don't wanna, it, it may have been the deciding factor between her and the other firm. I liked the other firm very much, they brought a lot to the table. But they didn't bring more to the table.
Correct.
It's important to me, and I bet others, that we do the brightest thing possible here. And, and having somebody local and experienced is, that goes along.
Yeah, I think so, too. I, we all agree. The board of selectmen are recommending this to each other.
Angus, just curiosity and education, what kinds of things will this, let's say they just come in and sit to interview somebody, what kinds of things do they do? Do they follow a certain questionnaire format? Is it, how do they react? How do they make their judgments?
Well, they're going to provide a comprehensive evaluation of every job within the town. That's gonna be looking at our existing job descriptions, job descriptions around the area, and also the conversation with the person, what do you do? So she will evaluate and revise the current job descriptions for every job that's in town. She's gonna review the hierarchical order of jobs using an evaluation system. She's gonna evaluate, she's gonna establish appropriate benchmarking standards and conduct salary surveys as needed for positions, similar positions with comparable Connecticut municipalities as required. Identify potential pay compression issues and provide potential solutions. Analyze and recommend changes to the present compensation structure to meet market analysis. This recommendation may include recommendations for individual positions as well. I can't tell you the process that she's gonna go through, because I don't know, I'll tell you after. But she's gonna speak with everybody who works here, about what they believe their job is. She's going to evaluate communities around the state that are similar to us and see where the salaries are. What is the appropriate salary for the position?
Does the union have any play in any of this? Because most of the uptown employees are most of the union members. Does the union affect what the job description is or the salary compensation is? No?
No.
The brief conversations we have had, Angus, with these firms, I've asked the same question. Right now, this is a management test.
Yeah.
When there is an interaction with the unions, time will tell. But right now, this is all being done by management and by us.
Yeah.
Everybody's doing, it's a fact finding mission.
Correct.
They wanna know what you do, you know, what the compensation is and your daily tasks. And they'll compare you with someone in Essex or Chester, or whatever their benchmarks are.
And remember, it is a competitive market. We, we should be competitive, so.
So there's gonna be a specific definition to each department or each job?
There is.
Each person's function.
There is now, there-
That person's gonna know, these are, this is the outline of what I do each day. What's expected of me.
Yes.
And she will apply, having my count, she will apply some discount to some of the things that people say, I'm attempting to be human, I need to know calculus to do, to do whatever I do. She will challenge many of the things that you say you may need to do in your job. So, is what she has shared. So it's basically how many people will add things to-
Wow.
What is required, to things they need. But it's not to say they're not there, but yeah. And then they will identify key things and go into the market and find them other places, so, yes.
I'm not going to count those, I don't care.
I question a job that can't do calculus, so what's the first way? So anyway, yes, we'll hopefully get started. This board asked that that be done. We were a bit vague, we said the fall. And I truly believe this woman thinks she can get that done by the fall.
All of them, I think. Actually, the, the larger firm that we did not, that were kinda discounted out of, they were, she was pretty backed up. But the other, the other two would've been able to run by the fall, and Deb has indicated she will.
And, and one of the things, I'll just throw, one of the things that became obvious to me, we are not the only town that is looking to rewrite our descriptions and do market stuff. Whether it is the, the time and the age, I do not know, but we are not alone as that.
No, but we should also make a note to future generations, maybe put it in a time capsule. They shouldn't wait thirty years to change service.
I started like getting your driver's license. Passage, finally.
And that's one of the things we chatted about with these folks. Once they hand us the study, can we-
Implement it?
Update it periodically ourselves? The general answer is sure, but we shall see. We shall see.
Yeah.
Well, we have the time, we have the time to do it.
This is, this is good, in the end, this is a good thing. We need to do it.
Correct. So, we should get started soon. And I think one of the things she offers in a proposal, she will come and talk to selectmen and board of finances if necessary, that's why the grandmas are being closed.
Yeah.
Even if we need to do it by Zoom, so, yes.
Yeah, you guys are talking.
So when will she start?
When will she start? Um, I, I-
I just called her a moment ago before the meeting and I said, it's time. So, I, she's gonna start working with Angus. We're out of this until Angus is the man on the street, so.
Okay, so she'll probably be pretty soon.
Yeah, no, I expect, I expect it'll be a week or two.
Okay.
Not this week, yeah. Excellent. Angus, anything else you wish to chat about and discuss?
Nah.
Okay. Well, I'm going to remind you that you were, you had success with your union.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yep, we reached an agreement, we'll be signing the contract this week.
And all is, all is well with union and management?
Yeah, I wish that it hadn't taken as long as it did to come to an agreement, but it did.
Well, as an ex goal to have, but these are extremely difficult times. You agreed to five percent, correct? What was your, your first offer? Let me go all the way back in time, what was your first offer?
I think we offered two and a half, three, three and a half, and four, maybe, maybe we, I don't think we ever got up to five, we might have landed it. No, we might have landed at five, we might have gone, we might have gone at five at the last year.
Okay.
So when did you, oh, so when did I ask that?
It's flipped around. It's, we're going five, five, four, and three. With some contributions. But, you know, the reality of it is that, you know, inflation is projected to be at six this year.
Six plus, that is correct.
And the other thing to remember about this, and I know, I know it can be, this can be perceived as a rationalization, but the last contract, four years ago, if you remember, we were, you know, a lot of questions as what, what kind of, what was gonna be happening, funding from the state, we had real serious concerns about our budget and, and the union, and their initial year took a zero increase. So, while I can't say it was paying them back, this, it, it was, last negotiation worked in, in our favor as far as that goes, and they, I would, I would suggest that they, they sacrificed, naturally, the union sacrificed a hero increases in order to, in order to help the town. I think this is an appropriate contract for, for the time to win. I don't like front loading, there's a lot of things I don't like, but in the end, this is a good contract for the town.
Okay. Just for clarification, it's five, four, three, four.
There you go, thank you.
Five, four, first year's five, four?
First year's five, then four, then three, four.
There you go, thank you, yes, that's, that's right.
So it's not-
So it's a four-year contract? Is that the, the current one, did we, was that four years?
Yeah, the last two have been four years.
And their contributions to health insurance was frozen, or did that increase?
No, that, that increased.
That increased, okay.
No, it froze in the first year and the second year, then increases percentage year. It'll end up at nine and a half.
And flipping back to the prior conversation, that's one of the things we talked about with our HR folks. When they look at, attempt to find comparative, can they introduce the costs of benefits?
Yes, they can.
And they seem to suggest, yes.
They do, yes.
Certainly something we're looking at.
It's an important part.
It's a lot of, it's usually twenty-five percent of, right?
Yeah. And, and the town has been generous.
All right, folks, that moves us over to the budget part of our meeting. You were sent two budgets, financials. Let's call the, the budgets that were sent to you, financials that were sent to you that ended on June thirty. That is the one that I, I looked at and attempted to give you an estimate where I think the current surplus is, and I think that is about four hundred and thirty. Majority of that surplus comes from unbudgeted revenue. Dollars are still coming in for expenditures, this grammar school is still, I'm about to use a bird word to catch your attention, a mystery. Last month, they had about a surplus of unspent, about three hundred and thirty, they're down to about a hundred and thirty, but dollars are still coming in. So I, I anticipate there will be dollars there, but I have not assumed any. So, so I still think my four thirty is a good number, but maybe on the conservative side.
Yeah, we'll see the expenditures are, I mean, you see, the expenditures are, it's pretty close as far as that was.
I would almost, now, does anyone have questions? Do you wish to go over June thirty, the old or the new? The new is so new, it's, there's not much there to look at, unless anyone would like to look at. Let me stay with the old, and I'm going to repeat things we already know. We have overspent in the old budgets. Town hall operations, much of it driven by oil and gas, oil for the building. There are still a few dollars left in what you saw in town buildings. I hope that Angus can find places to spend the fifteen thousand or so on a new table.
We did, Bud. We have not bought chairs, I like these chairs.
You're the only one. That one there, that you were sitting in there, that, that's, that one can go in the dumpster. No, not yours, bud.
He's gonna burn that.
Yeah, I'm gonna burn that one.
So anyhow, the town hall operations overspent. Building inspector is overspent. That's a bit of surprise from prior month, but if you think there is a correlation between building inspector's time with the amount of additions that people are putting on their houses, which we have gotten a substantial increase in revenue. Insurance, if you remember, we talked about insurance several times during the year, you shouldn't be surprised that that is a little over. Police, we just went through that a moment ago, police is overspent. Civil defense, due to about three thousand dollars in COVID costs, overspent, all of which we chatted about. Highway department is substantially overspent, that should not surprise anyone, we've been talking about it, but it's overspent. And if you look closely at your financials, you will see that the regional school is overspent by nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, okay? That is probably more of a mistake on my book. I took a number when we prepared the budget that somebody gave me in April, dropped it into a line item and never revisited. Their actual number was nine hundred and seventy-five dollars more than what, so we will put that, and who knows what they will spend and not spend during the year. So, so there is several over expenditures in the budget, lots of, that's lots of, lots of people coming in virtually on budget. So I'm gonna leave the June thirtieth unless people wish to go through it. And again, the budget would start at June one, there's not much in there to talk about. If we have reached an agreement on the union, if you remember in the budget, we put a contingency fund, everybody got three point five, and then we put a contingency. I and Angus have told Kathy upstairs to take that contingency and allocate it amongst all those who have salaries, all right, or expecting to get raises. There's a bit of, I think what we did is prudent and logical. There's a bit of aggressiveness. State law says that to change a budget item by more than ten thousand dollars, we should go to a town meeting. I don't think we have to go to a town meeting, this is what we told the town we were going to do. It is changing a line item by more than ten thousand something, we can't do. So if you are tolerant of not going to town meeting and not taking motions, let Angus and I tell Kathy to allocate it across the, those who are getting budgets, unless anyone is uncomfortable with that.
You did go to town meeting and they approved it.
They approved that line item.
Yep.
But now I'm taking that line item and changing it to a zero and moving it around. I'm going with you.
That's what it's for.
Town said, we're expecting this to happen.
That is, that is my rationale as well.
That's exactly what it's for.
This was approved at the town meeting.
Good, good. Unless anyone is uncomfortable, we'll see how the auditors do, but, um-
That's right, we'll see.
All right?
Tell you next year.
Okay. All right, everybody, unless you have anything else you wanna chat about. If you have a moment, if you have a moment, which I've looked for, for a while, I'm going to, I'm going to say the following. Here, I brought my annual report, okay? This is a grand document. If some of you, as I glance around the table, many of you work for firms who sell things, people pay them money, and they attempt to provide that product at a cost less than what people buy it from, and they earn adults. They have financial statements that demonstrate they are efficient. We work differently. We by law take money from people and say we're going to do things. Our financial statements are an attempt to demonstrate to citizens that they can hold us accountable for the work we do. Now, I'm going to also offer to you, while it is simple to say this document is proof to citizens that we are accountable for what we told them, it is not a particularly easy thing to do. I'm going to take you, if you're tolerant, through a brief adventure into the annual, to the financial statements. And I'm going to start with the table of contents. Table of contents starts with the independent auditor's report. The state of Connecticut, some states vary, state of Connecticut says, towns, put your financials together, tell your citizens what you have done, but we're going to have somebody make sure that you do it correctly, and we will have someone test your numbers. The world of municipal finance supposedly started nineteen oh two, when the merchants' association in the city of Chicago said to the town of Chicago, we don't think you're being particularly open about how you're spending our tax dollars. I will leave it to you to decide whether you think people may have a tendency to lean in one direction unless someone glances upon them. But because this document is not particularly easy to understand, the next item is management discussion and analysis. It is written by the management, but they have very, very little ability to be flexible in what they talk about. Management discussion takes anyone who wants to read a document and walks them through how to read the document, all right? We then have financial statements. I want you to glance at, there are two types of financial statements in the annual report. First type, on the top, is government-wide financial statements, and there's two different statements there. Under that is fund financial statements. All towns have three types of financial statements. Balance sheet for government funds, that is what we put together, that is what we work on every month, the government funds. There is also a statement of net position, a balance sheet, for those of you who remember your county, proprietary funds, which are businesses such as our sewer authority. It is possible that we could have a private firm come in and run our sewer. So the ability to have a fund that is comparative to if a private business do it, is how you would run this fund. And then the third type of fund that governments have is a fiduciary. It is money that we take care of in trust for others. Pension fund is the thing to think about. Now, just, and then there are notes that help you understand this whole thing, but I want you to glance at the last item. It is statement of revenue expenditures and change in fund balance. This, if you turn to this page, you will see the budget that we put together and talk about, all right? Let's take, and it will form the basis of government funds. Government fund, think of what we do every week. We look at cash, we just issued- We just issued a bond for a million four. It goes out the door as far as we are concerned. We buy stuff. We buy trucks. That cash goes out the door. That is the financials we look at, and that is how you will see government funds based on cash. But if you put those three funds together into a government fund statewide, you will see. If we borrowed money, we set up an obligation that we must pay back in 15 years. We bought fire trucks. We bought trucks. That is an asset that sits on the book. It is not an in and out, which is the way we see it. Let me have you now look at what we say in the financial status. The next line highlights the financial status. We said, the assets deferred outputs are, the headlines of the town exceeds its liabilities and deferred outflows of resources at the close of the most recent fiscal year. This is last year's. We obviously have not done this year's by $21 million, 576,651. Of this amount, 1,000, 1,474,300 represents the town unrestricted net positions. If you turn to the next page I have given to you, and I'm working off the book, you will see a, at the top, you will see, I want to look at revenues. Revenues and the first statement. Okay, there it is. Assets. No, haven't got it. Good. You will see statement of net position for the town. Government activities, the thing we are concerned about. Business activities, our sewer and others. And you see assets. Assets are the things that we use to provide services. Liabilities are how we pay for it. The net difference is what citizens have paid for in taxes. If you look way at the bottom of adding the two of them together, you will see the 21 million, uh, 576,765 cents. That is the total net position. That is what the town owns. Now, if you continue to read the headlines, of this amount, now we're getting, represents the town unrestricted. If you looked slightly above the 21, you will see that number, 1,474 dollars. That's the amount of dollars this town has in total that is available to meet other things which we have not yet restricted. The total town net position increased by 1,668 dollars. Now I offer, isn't that tempting to think a small number? We have assets that we use in the town to provide services. We have maintained those, those assets and we have grown them by a small amount. This demonstrates to you that we are not allowing our assets to deteriorate. We are actually contributing to the assets that are needed to provide services. Let me use the next sentence, which is closer to us. As of the close of the current fiscal year, remember this is two years ago. The town governmental funds report a combined ending fund balances of 3 million, through 55, 5, 3, 5, 5, 7, 6, 7, 1. I need to now take you over to the next pitch, assets, liabilities, and funds. Look on that very bottom number. This is the government numbers. This is what we concentrate on. There is a big difference in assets, liabilities, and net fund balance between what we worry about in government funds and what town-wide funds worry about. And if you're sitting on the beach, reading this book, you will see in this document there is a reconciliation of the two of them. Hopefully you have picked up, it is assets. We spend cash. Once we spend the cash, it's gone. But in the townwide, you put assets on your books. You use them and depreciate them. And also on your books is the source of borrowings that funds those assets. So I offer to you, there is a highlight here. We are doing very well as what our citizens. But this is the document that we offer to citizens to demonstrate, we told you we're going to do this and we are continuing to do it. So if you're stopped in the supermarket and someone with their green-eyed shade comes up to you and begins to ask, you now know where to look. Now, just because everyone has such a smile on their face, I'm going to have you look at the very last sheet. The very last sheet that I have drawn here is a town-wide source of use. And there it is, a town-wide activity. We have revenues coming in, we have expenditures. Every town in the United States creates this sheet. You can go anywhere, anywhere. If you're on vacation and so moved, you can go to every town you visit, ask for their annual report to see this report. This is really cool. So as it was Willie Nelson said, mamas, make your children grow up to be doctors, lawyers, and accountants. This is why, this is really cool stuff, okay? Look at way on the left-hand side, you see categories of government activity. This is what we do. General government, public safety, health, et cetera, okay? That's what it costs us to run each one of those activities. If you glance down, you'll see sewer. That's what it costs us to run the sewer. Each of those activities collects a little bit of money, the sewer being the one that collects a lot of money, all right? But you now go all the way over, rush you over to the net expenses. Each one of those activities, while they collect some money along the way, even sewer, is dependent on taxpayer funding. And if you see there's a shortfall about 15,2, and if you look down at the bottom, you will see that our tax revenues comes out about 15,4. That is how we pay for the entire town. And I think we're doing a grand job. If you are willing to work a little bit further with me, all right? Look at the shortfall in the business type sewers. The town of Deep River borrows money to put in the sewer plant. Once it is done, we hand it over to the water pollution controller. But we still pay the bonds, all right? But if you have moved all the assets to the sewer plant, the accountant says you have to move over how you're paying it. So on the books in here, it looks like this water pollution control has responsibility for all the, all the debt. We do that. So if you glanced further down, you'll see there's transfers between the general fund and the business fund by 293,000 dollars. So there it is, folks. There is the financial reports that we are putting together. We, as the board of finance, have responsibility for all of the finances to town. We are responsible for the, the financial report. So if there are questions, people have the right to ask us. Although I've been doing this for 16 years and no one's ever asked me. But we are ready when they get here. Thank you, everyone. I think I stuck that in in a, in a quick period of time, but. So again, I offer, hopefully this encourages you all to make your children accountants. It's a wonderful life. Everything balances at the end of the day. All right, do I have a motion to scatter ourselves in the balance?
Move.
So move. First.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.